Um, so I'm going to. Hi Lisa.
Melissa.
Uh, we'll call the meeting to order. Um, um, so first I'll start off with the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty Twenty Michisagi Territory. And in the traditional territory of the Michisagi and Chibewa nations. Collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Kirk Lake, Brahma, Hayawatha. Alderville, Skugog Island, Bozole, and Georgina Island First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area. And recognize its original indigenous inhabitants and the stories of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Um, next up, we have the adoption of the agenda. Um, I understand that the closed session has been canceled. Is that correct? Oh, David, I couldn't quite hear you there.
I was going to mention that, yes, it is canceled.
Okay. Um, any other changes? No, would you like to move to adopt the agenda?
Moved by Walt. Seconded by. Paul, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm starting off the meeting today because it is the first library board meeting of the calendar year. Um, so in the first meeting of the year, we, um, uh, our chair and vice chair roles. So, um, in accordance with BL zero three terms of reference of the officers. The library board shall elect a chair and vice chair at its first meeting each calendar year, the turn of the library board. Uh, call for nominations for the chair, um. Um, yeah, chair of the board in accordance with BL zero six election of officers. Uh, shall be opened by the CEO who will seek nominations for the position of the chair of the public library. So that is what, uh, I will be doing. So would anyone like to nominate, uh, chair for the library board for the twenty twenty four calendar year?
Maybe we should see if somebody's even interested.
I will, I will, I will continue if the board wishes.
Okay, so we have, uh, a nomination of David O'Brien to be the chair of the board. Um, is, are there any further nominations to be the chair of the board for this calendar year? Okay, I'll call, uh, second. Further nominations to become the chair of the board? One and third time, all right. Um, I don't think we have to vote if there's only one nomination. So congratulations and thank you, David, for continuing on in this role.
I think we need a mover.
So the motion is be it resolved that the nominations for the, uh, position of chair for the Halliburton County Public Library Board be closed. And that David O'Brien be appointed as chair of the Halliburton County Public Library Board. Um, may I have a mover? Paul? And seconder?
I think it was Lisa, yeah.
Very much. Um, and I think all in favor. Okay, and then tr- traditionally, we have, uh, when we have a public appointee in one role. We have a, an elected appointee in the vice chair role. Um, would any, oh, I'm sorry, actually, and then David, I turn the vice chair election over to you at this point.
Oh, you can, you can, you can finish it off, Andrea, go ahead.
Okay. Um, may I have a, a call, the call for nominations for the, uh, role of vice chair for the twenty twenty four calendar year? Is anyone interested?
I was gonna nominate Lisa, but I want to ask her first.
You know what, there's four of us that are on council in a four-year term. I, I would hap- happily. Share that with somebody else. I've, I've done a year and I, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, sounds good. Um, would I, any of the three remaining elected officials wish to serve as vice chair?
Somebody has.
I know I'm gonna turn it down because, uh, I've got so many other committees that I'm on, I already chaired too. So, so I would not be interested.
Okay.
I will, uh, nominate, my, put myself forward for vice chair in that case.
Oh, great, thank you, Jen.
Unless Walt, um, particularly desires to. In which case.
You can go ahead, Jen, I was just gonna say that, uh, I would step in, but I. I'm not saying I'm unreliable, but I do have a lot going on also in my life and I, I don't want to let, uh, the board down them, uh, so. But you go right ahead, Jen, thank you very much.
All right, so thank you, uh, Jennifer, um, for your, the nomination. So I'll just do one more call out for any further nominations for vice chair, follow the protocol. No, uh, okay, I will call out the, um, motion. Be it resolved that the nominations, oh, sorry, no, it is be it resolved. That the nomination for the position of vice chair for the Halliburton County Public Library Board be closed. And that, um, Jennifer Dayu be appointed as chair of the Halliburton County Public Library Board. Um, do I have someone to? Uh.
I think Adele moved it.
Adele, yeah, hey. Uh, and seconder? Cease? And all in favor?
Who seconded it? Who seconded it, Andrea? Cease, okay, thank you, yes.
Um.
All in favor, carried.
So.
Now I'll, now I'll take over, okay?
I guess you go over, yeah, with the peculiar interest.
All right. Thanks very much, Andrea. Item five is the declaration of peculiar interests. Anybody got something they'd like to declare? Either now or when it comes up during discussion during the meeting would be fine. Seeing none, um. We'll move to the consent agenda, which is the adoption of the minutes from the last regular meeting, which is, I think is, um. The meeting of December thirteenth, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, the other items are the librarians' report, circulation statistics. Is there anybody who wants to raise any issue or ask any questions with respect to the consent agenda? Seeing none, could I have a mover and seconder for the consent agenda, please? To be it resolved that Halliburton County accepts the consent agenda for the January tenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting as presented, moved, moved by. Cease, seconded by Walt. All in favor? Carried. Melanie, by a, by approving the consent agenda, we have by de facto approved the minutes, is that correct?
Yeah, so you can sign the minutes that I forwarded to you then.
Okay, I'll sign them and I'm gonna be dropping by to see you tomorrow morning.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, we're going to move to the financial reports now and we're gonna turn it over to. Uh, Andrea, please.
All right, so the December financials have come in. So this is, uh, different than from the year-end report, because some of the things that, um, happened towards the end of, uh, December. And things being paid right now are still in the works. Um, but the exciting news is that we got our provincial grant money on December the twenty eighth. Um, hundred and twenty thousand, uh, things arrived. So you'll see, um, in the budget, that's actually divided into the, uh, into two separate lines. The Ontario subsidies and the pay equity subsidy. Uh, but it arrived, uh, it was deposited in one lump, so some of a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty-three. So we're very pleased to, uh, get that. Um, I have seen, um, on the CEO list, uh, that some other libraries are still waiting for theirs to come in. So, um, I was very happy that, um, it arrived for us just, uh, before the, the December thirty first. Um.
They're getting better, usually it's December thirty first at midnight.
Well, I bet it was, uh, for some people.
I mean, for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that you think they'd give us this year's already and get it over with.
Yeah. Well, um, it came, so.
That's good. Go ahead, Andrea.
Um, so there aren't really a lot of sup- surprises. We've seen kind of this, um. Uh, financial report month by month, we've already talked about things that were over budget. Such as the advertising, the programming, um, and those we had, uh, reserve funds to cover. Um, the small tools and equipment, you know, we talked about last time. And, um, so I think everything is pretty much on track, you know, we'll just wait for any last. Um, minute, you know, the, the, uh, financial, uh, department's coding all of the last-minute invoices. But, um, things look good overall. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
I, I don't have a concern, but I have a, 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 kind of a general question, but it, it will become specific after you listen to me explain for it. Um, it, it, have we actually put money in the budget now for the, um. For the opening of the branch in Algonquin Highlands?
So that will be in, um, the, when we talk about the twenty twenty four budget. So the amounts that we discussed, um, at the December meeting, the up.
Yeah, I, 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 I remember, I remember it was up to sixty-three thousand or something like that. But I'd like to raise that issue when we get into the twenty twenty four budget. If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll talk, um, and so Andrea Robinson from finance has put, um, the, she's allocated the money. There's, there's notes in the, uh, in the budget spreadsheet, so.
Okay, great, thank you. I have a motion that the, uh, Halliburton County Library Board accepts the financial report as presented. Could I have a mover and seconder, please, unless there are other questions? Moved, moved by Jennifer. Seconded by Lisa, thank you very much, all in favor? Motion carried. Okay, now we're going to, um. There's no business arising from the minutes. Sorry, I'm a little lost here, my thing, here we go.
So I think the auditing cost is the next, uh.
Yes, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, so this is a verbal update. So at the December meeting, um, we talked about the auditing cost for the year being more than was originally budgeted for. Um, and he asked me to seek some information about, um, kind of more details about whether we were part of the county audit. Or whether we could do something separately, um, so I did find that information. Um, so the library board uses the county's finance department for the administration of our finance and payroll functions. Um, since the library board is part of the kind of county finances. We do, um, form part of their consolidated financial statement. So therefore, we must be a part of the county's, uh, audit. With that said, the HCPL board, um, is tracked as its own separate fund within the county's finance system. Um, so we're a separate entity. Um, so the auditor provides the, uh, HCPL board with separate financial statements. The county's policy is to release an RFP every five years for auditing services. And this is their requirement under the municipal act. Um, and an auditor, uh, cannot be appointed for a term exceeding five years. So right now, the current, um, auditors contract covers from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven. Uh, so as long as the library is part of the finances being run through the county. The library, um, finances will be run through that county audit process. Um, if the library board would like to retain, um, their own auditor. We would need to be prepared to look, to take on our own financial and payroll services. And removing us from the county's books, which I think is. Yeah, so that's the, uh, information I'm coming back with from, um, the finance department. Does anybody have any questions?
Who, who are the auditors again?
Uh, KPMG.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you very much. Any questions on that? I think we stick with the county on the audit process, obviously, it makes no sense for us to have our own separate auditor for this, for this organization. The next item will be the draft twenty twenty-four library budget, and again, we'll turn it over to you, Andrea, please.
Um, so the, uh, document that I included, included in the board package shows, uh, comparison of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And twenty twenty-four proposed, uh, the budgeted amounts and the actual amounts. Um, so, uh, the, these are the amounts for the most part that Chris had entered and presented to you in October. Uh, with a few exceptions that I'm going to highlight for you now. Um, so the first, uh, thing to highlight is in, um, number twenty-five, transfer from reserve. Uh, there is seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, in the twenty twenty-four budget to, um, uh, to remove from a reserves. This is the up to twenty, or up to sixty-three thousand dollars that we discussed at the, uh, the, uh, previous board meeting. And as well, two, um, six thousand dollar, um, amounts that were set aside in previous years. And those are to fund, um, IT capital purchases. So that's why it says seventy-five thousand instead of sixty-three thousand. Um, so those, every year we set aside money and then when we need to, um, replace computers. Then it comes out of that fund, so, um, that is different from the budget that Chris presented, uh, to you. Now, David, is that what you have a question about?
Yeah, um, on the, uh, on the amount we're setting aside for the, um. For the new library, um. I, I've been thinking about this a little bit and, um. Me, perhaps you could help, help, help us walk through what we're providing versus what we're asking Algonquin Highlands to provide. As we develop, as we develop the room for the library, do you have those numbers with you?
Um, I do, and some of them come up kind of as we go through the document here.
Yeah.
Um, but just a summary from what we discussed, um, before. So twenty thousand dollars for collections. Um, thirty-five thousand dollars for, uh, furnishings and shoving furniture.
Was that thirty thousand?
Thirty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, four hundred dollars for office supplies, um, materials. Um, programming materials, a hundred dollars. Signage, five hundred dollars. And, um, I think we said seven thousand for IT equipment. Um, in terms of the IT equipment, Mark Jones, uh, has already started to purchase things. So we've started to have some, um, uh, purchasers and invoices come in for those items. Uh, Cheryl, our collections, uh, development coordinator, has been liaising with, uh, library bound. About, um, the purchase of our collections. And they have, um, agreed to track them using a separate budget code. And to keep them in storage until we're ready to, um, receive them. Since we don't know exactly the date that we're going to be open, which is really great. Um, so that's, the collections is in the works. Um, Aaron and I tomorrow have, um, a meeting set up with Kate Lovett. Uh, who, um, handles procurement for the county, she's the procurement coordinator. Um, and we're going to be discussing, um, an R, RFP or RFQ process, um. Actually, our, I think RFP process for, uh, furnishings. So that's more to come, I guess, at the next meeting on that. And, yeah. That's sort of what's in the works. So as we go through, going back to the budget document, you'll see that, um, Andrea Robinson has. So she's noted the transfer from reserves, uh, for that amount. And then she's specifically made notes in, um, the budget lines. You can look at the column on the right hand, far right-hand side. Um, so for office supplies, oh, sorry, actually, for that too. Uh, so if we press pause, we're talking about Dorset and kind of go systematically back through the budget, I think that'll be easier.
Yeah, no, you don't have to, Andrea, you don't have to do that in detail. I'm getting, where I'm going in, in my head is that, are we, are we as a library? Contributing enough money? Uh, to fairly represent our needs around the Dorset branch? Um, um, Jen, maybe you can help me with this, I don't know, I don't know what's being done. Specifically, specifically by Algonquin Highlands, so at the Dorset branch. But I'm kind of been struggling with, uh, you know, we're, we're providing a certain amount of, of material books, obviously, and stuff like that. But is there something else that we as a library should be doing to enhance the Dorset retrofit? Um, making it just that much better for not a lot of money? I, Adele had her hand up, maybe I'll let her jump in before Jen, you, you, you comment. You're on mute, um, Adele.
Um, so. If we go back to what the, um, motion was at our December meeting, it was up to sixty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I had mentioned at the December meeting that, um, I believe traditionally. The townships are responsible for furnishing the branches. And the library is responsible for providing the collection and the staff. So when we made the motion at the last meeting. I was under the impression that we were starting at zero, could go up to sixty-three thousand. But that there was to be a negotiation with the township as to what kind of help was needed financially. Um, so.
And I think that's the correct assumption, Adele, yeah.
Right, so I'm wondering at this point, if purchase orders are going in, who's paying those bills? If we haven't yet had a negotiation with the township as to contributions.
Um, so the per- the purchases that have gone in are part of, uh, computer equipment. So they're definitely things that the library would pay for, like, it's not, not for things that we would ever ask a municipality to pay for. So, yeah, computers for staff.
And, and books and things like that, obviously, yes, okay.
Okay.
So it's, it's, um, not, the part that is gone through is not for, um, furniture.
Yeah, it's not physical setup.
Yeah, so we're just starting a process, we're gonna start tomorrow to talk about a process for getting quotes for. A company to furnish the space with all of the, what, what's needed. And then that's where we can start talking with Algonquin Highlands. Um, I, uh, we do have, uh, with Mark Jones from IT and some library staff, uh, meeting. Uh, on January seventeenth, where we're all gonna meet at the Dorset Recreation Center and see the space. So it's, will be the first time for the library staff to actually go in there and see what it looks like. Um, I understand that the flooring ha- is there and paint on the walls, I believe. So we'll be going, those parts of the furnishings have already been provided by the township. Um, so we'll be coming to look at, you know, what's needed in terms of wiring. Mark will look at that and, um, to get a sense of what we would want to put where in the space.
Okay, okay, good. Jen?
Uh, thanks, yeah, um, and th- the other already known contribution from the township is, of course. The furnishings for the meeting room, because there is the library space proper. And then the, um, uh, the meeting room, which is right across the hall from the library space, as you recall. That we can pre-book for the library for any day that the library is open. And any additional days for programming outside of regular hours or, or whatever it might be. So that it is dedicated space ad infinitum for the library. So all of those furnishings would, of course, be covered by the township. Um, bearing in mind that they will also be chosen by the township because they will have multiple uses. It, it isn't just a library meeting space.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that would be my first, my first piece. I, um, I have spoken about our conversations with Liz. Um, it has not yet gone back to council, just because of scheduling, Christmas scheduling. We have not met since, um, the, the library board's last, um, last conversation, or at least not. I'll have to remember, but maybe not with enough time to add it onto the agenda, it was one of those two things. Um, and we will be, we will be meeting for the first time on the eighteenth of January. So council has not had an opportunity to formally discuss, um, a cost share. But I have spoken informally to Liz and, um, Liz and I a- agree on some reservations. Uh, with, um. With the, the idea of Algonquin Highlands putting in the, uh, all of the, the, the furniture for the stacks and everything else. Um, we are, uh, under a huge, huge burden with the resuscitation of the Dorset Rec Center. This has come at us, it has blindsided us, it is putting us, you know, uh, it's putting a, a million plus dollars. Um, into, um, uh, into our, uh, our budget that we never saw coming. Uh, and we're managing through reserves, et cetera, but we are already putting in a huge amount of money into, into this building. Um, and, um, w- we also talked about, um, the fact that. For the last number of years, as you know, Algonquin Highlands has been the least served township of the four. Receiving county money for library services, and this predates the closure of the Dorset Library. Um, into the, you know, into the term before, um, when we only had just a few hours at Dorset. And, and, um, and, and a few more, uh, at Stanhope, but, but that was it. So I don't have the figures in front of me, but it strikes us both that. If you tally up the amount of county resources that have gone into the four townships for library services of the last number of years. The, the, by, by an order of magnitude, the lowest amount has come from Algon- uh, come to Algonquin Highlands. And we'd like, we'd like the library board to, to consider that in, in, you know, in the proposal of what is, what is taken to Algonquin Highlands. Uh, for a cost share, um. We think that given that, you know, this is a, a capital reserve. And there's quite a considerable amount of money in the library board capital reserve. Um, we, as, as this board, have not discussed where else. Those funds could go in the, in the immediate or, or medium term. Um, it's, it's a lot of money for capital reserves, given that we already have most of our bricks and mortar and our. Pieces of equipment already, already in all of our branches. Um, and, um, I don't particularly foresee a new branch opening up anytime soon after Dorset. Which sort of speaks to the question of precedent setting, which is I, a legitimate concern that was raised last time as well. And so for, for all of these reasons, um, Liz and I would like to come back to library board and request that. That this board, as a, as a one-off, consider, um, funding the furniture. That does not include, as I say, the, the meeting room, which we are, um, which we are already funding. Um, it, 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 it sort of bows against tradition and, and what is expected. But, um, under these particular circumstances, um, it is our sincere request of the library board, consider that.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's kind of where, where my head was at, so. Would it be, and Jen, I have to rely on you on this because you're the representative of Algonquin Highlands, um, with Liz not being here. Um, I think Andrea said that you're going to begin discussions with the Algonquin Highland staff shortly.
Oh, we have a meeting to go to the, uh, the site to see the library for the first time on the seventeenth. So that's not a financial discussion, that's, uh, like, be in the space and see it and.
Yeah.
Envision, you know, what the space will be like, type of conversation.
Okay, so, uh, perhaps, um, we would let that meeting unfold. Jen, and then, uh, come back and, and discuss that issue that you raised. Cause I, I'm kind of of the same opinion, I think there's something we have to do. More than what we're doing to get the Dorset branch set up the way we want, given the fact that all other communities in the county. Have well-established, well-functioning libraries. Um, so I, I'd just throw that out there for now. Cease, you had your hand up, sorry.
Yeah, I, 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 actually, I want to drop right down to the last two lines of, of it, uh, cause I'm confused when we see that. I'm looking at the total expenses which have gone up roughly ten point seven five percent. But the net total, am I correct in saying it's gone down thirteen percent? Because if that's the case, then, then, then the argument for. For assisting Algonquin Highlands is pretty well there, if we got a, 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 a net. Reduction in cost of thirteen percent, surely to God, we can come up with something for Algonquin Highlands.
Yeah. Andrea, can you address?
I, I, is, am I wrong, or what, what's? Am I wrong or what what's?
So I do have some things that I want to highlight um. For us to discuss in terms of what is uh, the numbers that are in the budget. Um, and I do think we we have an unusual amount in our reserves because of COVID. And because of staffing changes, so um, I feel that probably for capital. Costs, it might be uh, more strategic to use the reserve funds for that and not. Fund things out of operating reserves like.
That's that's fine. That's that's where it should probably come from. Does that answer your question, Cece?
The budget first?
Yeah, okay, okay, take take it.
Okay, because because like I say, I I got a real challenge with. I'm hearing that every organization around is getting increases um, after. Just taking very, very sharp pencils, sometimes two and three at a time, and they're coming up with anywhere between four and ten percent. So I'm just concerned that that are we looking at a a negative or a reduction in cost? Of thirteen percent, because because that would lead me to ask, how the hell did that happen? And secondly, uh, maybe we should put some money in there for Algonquin Highlands in some way, shape or form, whether it's.
Yeah.
From reserves which we are transferring, or whether it's just by doing something, because something's not adding up to me.
Yeah, I I hear you. Okay, Andrea, go ahead and then Paul had his hand up. We'll wait till Andrea's finished, Paul, if you don't mind.
Well, that's good, sure.
Um, okay, so we've talked about the transfer to reserve. Um, the next section is wages and benefits. Um, so you can see in uh, that line, the amount is eight hundred and forty two thousand, four hundred and two dollars. So yeah, Andrea Robinson has added the uh, Dorset staffing. Um, as well as the additional programming hours into that amount. Um, so that is an increase of eight point four four percent. Um, so, and so then the the um. Uh, the finance department figures out then this, the sick pay statutory pay and all that sort of thing, so they. They uh, figure out those amounts. So the overall um, increase to that section for wages and benefits uh, is eight point three percent. Um, in terms of supplies and equipment, so we have um, uh. Eleven percent uh, increase for uh, expected cost increases. We also have um, the uh, four hundred dollars uh, in there for office supplies. So this is one line where um, I think the the current estimate may be a little bit low. If we look at the um, actual amounts um, from previous years, we. We um, have the new air purifiers. And um, I asked Melanie for some information about filter replacements. Um, and we are going to have to factor in the the filter replacements into that office budget line. Um, so I would like to suggest that we increase that budget line um, by about two thousand dollars. A year. Um. That's a suggestion, so I'm gonna throw my suggestions as we go through. Um, the uh, the next sections are all uh, the same as Chris had entered in October. Um, the one thing that I would like to highlight is that uh, in the eBooks line. The amount is unchanged from uh, the last several years at fifty thousand dollars. Um, and I just wanted to flag, uh, people have seen in the circulation statistics that um. Our our eBooks continue to get more and more use and they cost more and more money, so. Um, just flagging, you know, that for you in. Um, they're getting more use and we're not increasing the budget and they're getting more expensive, so that is in fact. Um, a cut, even though it's the same budget amount. Um. And so this is uh, Cece, one thing that may um, address something that you're wondering about. Um, I looked again at the automation amount that uh, was budgeted. Um, when this was presented to you in October, and it says uh, one thousand five hundred dollars. You'll see that um, in the previous years, the in that budget line automation was significant more. Um, and in some cases, that's, you know, because we had the website uh, charges were put in that budget. Um, but I think that Chris may have made a typo in that line. Uh, and it may have actually been um, meant to say fifteen thousand dollars rather than. One thousand five hundred dollars. Um, so that would be a fairly significant amount. The um, the some of the charges that would uh, be coming from that. Are our Ontario Library Consortium um, fees, so um, we pay for. Like our symphony or database, our um, Biblio Commons. Um, so that the total of that's the invoice for. Uh, I have the invoice for twenty twenty-two was uh, fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents. So I think that um, that's a fairly significant uh, difference. Um, so I think that that is an error. Um, I also would like to point out the advertising amount in um. The line, so there's automation bibliographic services and advertising is two thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, I do think that we should consider increasing this amount. We have um, Cheryl, our collections development coordinator, will be retiring this year, so that is going to add. Um, that will be, you know, um, an external posting that will need to advertise. And every time we um, advertise a job posting, it does cost money from the advertising budget line. And it's not really widely advertising that it's meant for, it it ends up being, you know, money for advertising job postings. Um, so I would like to consider you to consider maybe increasing that amount. Um. The postage amount um, in here is two thousand four hundred dollars. Um, it's actually um, less than the amount that was previously budgeted. Um, I know we do get some reimbursement uh, for postage, um. But that's also something that uh, it's it's less than what we've previously spent. Uh, the insurance amount, I believe, has gone up a little bit, and that's an amount that is entered by county finance. That amount is thirty two thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh. And you'll see that the uh, in the small tools and equipment budget line. There is the thirty five thousand. Um, amount, five hundred amount for the Dorset furnishings shelving and signage. So that um, has been uh, put into the the draft budget there. Um, another uh, item that I'd like to highlight uh, is the in the contracted services. So the amount for the um, auditor has been increased in in there. Uh, the professional services line um, has currently has no budget. And because um, Cheryl will be retiring and will be looking at her job description, she's been in that role for quite some time. I think we probably will need to um, have someone review the uh, the job before it's posted. So I think that uh, at least three hundred dollars would be uh, good to to put in that line. And um. On the following page, we have the in the book budget. You'll see the book budget is uh, eighty eight thousand dollars. So that is us, uh, an amount that is sixty eight thousand for the regular collection. And uh, with the twenty thousand dollars um, from reserves added on to purchase the collection from door for Dorset. So that number is in there as well. Um. So that is, so those are um, the suggestions that I have in terms of amounts that. You may want to uh, adjust in terms of the draft budget.
Thank you. Uh, Paul, you had a question, please?
Um, I just want to register my my sentiments on the sharing of costs with Dorset. Like it seems to be a. Like I'm partial to doing that based on what Jennifer had to say about. Lot uh, less service over the past few years. But at the same time, I'm conscious of precedent and equanimity to the other townships. But if the township, uh, the municipal members. Um. Have a sense that there wouldn't be resistance or issue with anybody at their table, then. I think would be more than fair to to do, you know, extend that to Dorset. Again, especially because of the diminished service in that township. I just want to register it. I I I, you know, there there's a balance there, but. At the same time, if we have the reserves and there's a possibility that because of the pressures in other areas. That it might disappear, then we should take the opportunity and use it for this.
Yeah, I thank you very much, Paul. That's kind of where my head was at. Going to uh, Cece's question about the the uh, net. Uh, total of the budget, which looks like it's had a thirteen percent reduction overall. Are we reading that correctly? The last line of the budget?
Yes, yes. But with the caveat that I think that um, there are some lines in the draft budget that should be adjusted.
Yeah, okay, so let's just uh, uh, start there then in the discussion, so. You've outlined a number of items that uh, you would like to add to the budget or at least adjust throughout your discussion. Are those numbers reflected in the final numbers here?
No, no, there I'm bringing to them to your attention right now.
Okay, I I didn't have any seemed to have any problem with them. Um, what's the what's the quantum? What's the total amount if you put it all together?
Um, I didn't, I didn't actually make a total, uh, I was, yeah, I wasn't sure how the board would feel. About those, so. Um. I could. Do a total right now?
That would be a thing, because that'll give us a final number to deal with today. If we approve, I didn't have any issue with the points you raised. It's just that I want to know the number, the total number.
So, uh, two thousand? Um, ten thousand? Yeah. Um, well, we didn't talk about uh, for advertising a specific amount to increase. Um. But. Uh, could say five hundred dollars? Well, and also for the uh, eBooks, we would need to discuss um, an amount as well.
And I do think eBooks and audiobooks are very important um, to a lot of people, including myself.
So it's uh, like, it's um, the eBooks line has been fifty, was fifty thousand budgeted in. Twenty twenty-two, fifty thousand budgeted in twenty twenty-three. And uh, the current amount in twenty twenty-four budget is fifty thousand. Um, so I guess I would put that to um, the group as to in terms of an increase. Uh.
Give us a recommendation, what would you recommend it become?
I'd say probably five thousand dollars more would be.
Okay, that's good.
Five thousand?
Yeah.
And Andrea, presumably you from, you can pull statistics on what type of um. Literature people want more so that you can direct any additional funding to gaps or is that is that how that works?
Um, but it are, uh, yes, our collections development coordinator, some some of the resources that we uh, access are through a provincial consortium. So all public library um, members um, who belong to the consortium access those. And then we have specific uh, titles, they're called advantage of titles. That uh, show purchases and they're specifically for the borrowers of our library.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Um. Uh, Jackie, I I'm gonna let her uh, let Andrea finish then I'm gonna do Jackie, and I think Adele had her hand up as well. Adele first, then Jackie, but Andrea, what's what's the final number?
Oh.
Are you done yet?
Uh, sorry. Seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Seventeen five, okay, good. So that would be the additional amount that we're being asked to approve. Above and beyond the budget that's before us today. Is that correct? Okay, now, a couple of people had their hands up. First was Adele, and then after her, Jackie, please.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question about the E ro- E resources line, which is just above the eBooks line.
Hmm.
It looks like in twenty twenty-three, we had a budget of just over thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, spending in twenty twenty-three was uh, about nineteen thousand. And yet the budget for twenty twenty-four is uh, ten thousand, five hundred?
Yes, I also uh, flagged that and did some investigation, Adele, because I had the same reaction as you did. Um, so I did uh, connect with Erin about her, uh, the E resources that um. We wanted to continue to subscribe to. Um, and what um, I believe happened is that the amount was charged to. The uh, that E resources budget that was for um, the provincial consortium costs. So I think there was a a charge that went into that budget line that was actually for um. The the charges for our library systems, that should have been in a different budget line. So, uh, I can't speak to the pre, like, uh, I started digging when I looked at that number. And I think that that's what happened in the um, in the previous year.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so a follow-up question then, um, so if the budget last year was thirteen thousand. Then why is it down to ten thousand this year? For this coming year?
Yeah, um, Chris put uh, Hitkeeper, which is the um, uh, software that keeps track of our uh, book budgets. He put that in line in the automation line for um.
Okay.
I'm unaware that voted to.
Yeah, just a reassignment.
So essentially, essentially, we're still subscribing to the same number of E resources, it's just on set different lines, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
I I looked at that too, Adele, and I was, uh, yeah.
Thank you, Adele. I'm gonna now over to Jackie, please.
Um, I just wanted to confirm that that adjustment of the seventeen thousand some, um, included. Um, the going from fifteen hundred to fifteen thousand on on one of those lines that um. That you felt a typo had been made.
Yeah, ten thousand, yeah.
It does include that, okay, great, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, Cece, go ahead.
Yeah, it still doesn't answer the question that I've got. If 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 I understand correctly. Uh, then we are, we're taking a hundred and sixty two thousand, two hundred and eighty-four, which appears to be the the net differential between what we did. Uh, this or what we're planning for twenty-four versus twenty-three. We're adding another seventeen thousand, five hundred to it, so that's gonna bring it up to just shy of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That we currently are appearing in expenses. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So I have no idea what the net total line means, because it doesn't have any value whatsoever in relation to anything. Because um, what 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 are all those numbers mean on on the net total? I don't get what that number is, because it doesn't reflect a net, a net, because we would have to have a swing. If we have, i- if we take the ten percent that the expenses are going up. And the net value going down is thirteen, that means there has to be a swing of twenty-two percent. It only can come from revenue, and that is not there. So so how did we get? What is that number? I don't know if it has any value at all. I don't. What is that number? I don't know if it has any value at all, I don't understand what the net total line is telling us. It doesn't tell me anything.
Andrea?
I think where it gets confusing, uh, for me at least, is because in the revenue section, we're taking the money. We're transferring the money out of reserves, um, and so it, and it, it shows in reserves, but then it shows. Um, added in those different places. Um, so I'm not sure if that changes the net, like if it, you take the net and then subtract reserve amount?
So is that the, is that the money we're taking out of the reserves to, to uh, set up the, uh, the library in Dorset?
So what we agreed at the previous meeting is up to sixty-three thousand dollars, um, so that. Decided, and that amount shows in um, in the budget, in the net line, twenty-five transfer from reserves. There's seventy-five thousand dollars, so sixty-three thousand for Dorset, um, and twelve thousand for computer replacements. That are.
That, that's, that's the big revenue shift, Cece.
That's how we get, okay.
It's bringing in the transfer from the reserves into revenues. Which, which, I, I agree with you, in normal circumstances, that would be crazy, but now you under- now we understand why it's happening, I get it.
Okay, now I get it.
Yeah, Adele?
So Andrea, what another way of, of presenting the numbers, or helping us understand the numbers be. Uh, let me just look at the, the very top line on the budget. Which is taxation taxes. Um, and it looks like um, this budget asks for another seven and a half percent of the taxpayers, is that correct?
That is, yes.
So that's, that's what our, our um, our county councillors. Would be interested in, I guess, is, is we're opening the Dorset branch next year. And it's going to cost the taxpayers an extra seven and a half percent, is that where we're sitting?
On that, on that particular line, yes.
Yeah, so all the activities, uh, ignoring what's coming out of reserves. Or factoring in what's coming out of reserves are going to cost the taxpayers an extra seven and a half percent.
Uh, well, a little bit more than that if we add on the seventeen thousand.
Okay, plus we're getting another branch out of the deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that sounds like a pretty good deal.
Yeah, so this is, this is, this is why I wanted to talk about this, because I saw that uh, as well. Opening the, opening the Dorset branch drives the expense line. And you would expect that if you're opening a new branch, obviously, you've got to be able to people and materials and all of that. And then the transfer from the reserves. Uh, to, to accommodate that expenditure, drives the revenue line. Cece was dead on when he looked at it and thought, wow, this is pretty crazy, how'd you get thirteen percent difference? Um, but if you think of it in the, i- i- in the sense that it's a, it's a, it's a operating uh, charge for a new branch. And the revenue is coming from reserves to help pay for that, then it flattens the whole thing out quite nicely. So, um. I have, um, um, Melanie, I have to ask you a question, I have two motions here in front of me, one is to approve the draft budget. As presented, and one is to accept the draft budget as accepted.
So you can cross out and re-put that, because I didn't know if you were going to accept any of the changes.
Okay. Um, Jen?
Thank you, um, David, you said you wanted to defer a decision on the contribution. Of furniture to Dorset after the staff meeting um, on site, and I just wanted to know what. What additional information do you think will be, will be had from that meeting that would further our thinking as a board? And, and then is it really necessary to do that, or could we just bite the bullet and call a vote right now?
Yeah, I, we could, the only thing, and I, I, I agree completely, don't go get me wrong, I'm not saying. That the staff meeting take place because I want to defer per se, I just don't know what the number is. Of things that we could be doing beyond what we've already said we would do. I just don't know what that number is, what is the cost of the stacks, as an example? Um, that we would begin to pay for. And maybe Andrea, maybe Andrea has an answer right now.
So we do, well, we did the brainstorming and we thought um, thirty-five thousand. Ish would be uh, an appropriate amount to furnish the branch, we haven't started yet with the process to um. You know, see if anyone is able to furnish it for that amount, so if, depending on what we get back in, in that. Proposal process, if the amount, you know, would come to more than thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, that might be an opportunity where we would go to Algonquin Highlands and ask them to pay for the difference. Ideally, we'll come in.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's where we're going with this, I don't think we're gonna ask Algonquin Highlands to pay anymore. I think we're gonna try and contribute something to the process. Lisa?
Sorry, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused on this, and I, and I appreciate Jennifer where you and Liz are coming from, um, however. When, when the build, when the library is built, the furniture is actually, that is put in each library, is paid for by each local municipality. So Minden Hills Branch, Minden Township paid for the furniture, we actually own the furniture that's in the building. So if county council, or if the library is, if we're gonna use money from the library budget. That is actually county council budget money. Do you think that perhaps county council, members of county council should have input as to whether or not the money is spent on. The furniture that is normally paid for by the municipality, I'm not saying that it should or shouldn't be, I just want to make sure that we. Cross our Ts, dot our Is here on this one.
And, and, and Lisa, that's where my head's at, with respect to the cost.
And maybe other members of council have a, have a, a thought about how that works, but in my mind, that it would be a county council decision. Only because it's coming out of the county council budget, not Algonquin Highlands budget.
Like everything uh, we do at the library, we'll make a recommendation to the, to the county council for a budget, um, and if we accept. I'm gonna propose we accept the draft budget as amended to the tune of seventeen five or something like that. Um, and that's the debacle document, go to county councils, then up to county council, decide whether or not they want to do it. The difference here is that it, that the, the extra money that we're talking about. That it might go to, towards Dorset, is not gonna come out of the operating side, it's gonna come out of the reserves. So it won't affect the operating budget that we put before the county council. Adele?
But it is actually um, library reserves of funds that were provided by the county. And I'm, and as I said earlier, I'm just, I'm concerned about um. Changing the way things have historically been done and setting the precedent, and now that Lisa brings up. That really, um, it would be decided at county council whether to approve all the numbers. Perhaps we can only make a recommendation, I mean, I'm an Algonquin Highlands taxpayer, so obviously, um. These decisions would affect me whether, whether the township provides the furniture or not, but I have to remember, I've got to firmly have. My library board hat on right now, and, and think about precedent.
Yeah, I agree, Cece has his hand up then, Jen, please.
I guess my question would be, at the end of the day, and I understand the whole thing about the reserves now, so I don't really have a question on that. But I guess I'm trying to filter through all this, and what is gonna be the ask of county council? For this year in relation to what we asked last time, are we gonna be asking for more or less? In relation to, to, to what our, 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 our requirements are gonna be to fund twenty twenty-four as compared to twenty twenty-three? A- and, and the whole idea of should we move reserves to, to uh, assets that are typically res-. You know, the responsibility of municipalities is obviously a gray area that we've never been to before.
Yeah. And, and, and that's a good question, Cece, um, do you want to take a run at that, Andrea?
Well, well, I, without the, so the numbers that we've just.
Let's, let's pretend it would be, do, do this quick calculation in your head. Take the transfer of sixty-three thousand dollars out. I, I'm not saying we voted out, just remove it from your calculation, add seventeen five back in. And that's the number that we would be going forward to this, Cece. Basically, if, if you didn't count that unique revenue thing. Now, we've already passed the motion saying that we're gonna spend up to sixty-three thousand. So legitimately bringing that sixty-three thousand forward into the revenue side is, is the right thing to do, if you're gonna present a budget. What it does though, it makes the budget a little, budget goes a little wonky, because it's a one-off revenue thing, it's not gonna be there next year. Not a continuing revenue stream.
But if I can follow up?
Yeah.
It, it doesn't answer my question, and I appreciate that we, we, we could be taking a lot of this money from reserves, I don't have a problem with that. So that money is not money that we would be asking for the county for, we would be just trying to decide whether it would be the right thing to do. To take the reserves and apply them to Dorset, but that's a different argument. My question is, at the end of the day, when we go to county council with a budget. How much money are we asking for in twenty twenty-four for them to supply as opposed to twenty twenty-three? What's the net change?
Andrea's working on it. So. I'm not sure if I'm correct, I'm not good at math under pressure, uh, I have one thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-four. I don't think it's correct, no.
Why don't, why don't we do this, why don't you take some time to do that properly? Outside of this meeting. That, that way we'll get the correct information. Um, when does the, uh, when does our budget have to be submitted to the county?
Um, I believe they're starting deliberations quite soon, so I don't have an actual date, I think typically we do a practice run-through.
Could, could you, could you find that out, and then, then what you could do, what you could do then, if you find out that date. Um, that we work towards, uh, do your calculations on the budget that we're talking about now. And we can have a special uh, uh, board meeting for a half an hour or so to, to go through all of that detail and approve what you're gonna give to the county. Jen, you have your hand up?
Yeah, and then maybe in that same amount of time, we could, we could um, find a, a succinct answer to Lisa's question, which is a really good question about. Um, does this go back to county, or is it the full discretion of the library board? Um, I don't know, but it would be good to know the answer to that, I wonder if in previous years, there have been. Unusual requests that have gone back to county, or whether they have been the full discretion of the library board, um, I don't know who would. Uh, maybe Gary Dyke would be the person to answer that, but uh, maybe we could try to resolve that in the same special meeting.
Good point, thank you, okay, so we're not gonna do anything with the budget in this meeting then. And thank you very much for that discussion, because as I was reading this document for today's meeting. I was going through the same things that we're talking about today, it, it kind of jumps at you and, and Cece. Um, you know, if somebody walked in and looked at our budget and didn't know what was going on, you're dead on, they'd say, gee, you got a thirteen percent decrease, how'd you pull that off? In today's world, when everything's costing more money. So it was, it was a, a good point, so, um, uh, your direction Andrea is to, is to calculate the number. And show it to us?
Open, update all the numbers, um, and get them into a useful, I've got lots of notes everywhere in my book, so I'll make a clean copy.
Yeah. I'd rather you, but I'd rather you do it outside of this meeting, so you're not under any pressure, this is not the time to do something like that. I understand, you, you work with your team, you work with your team on that, and when you're ready, let me know and I'll call a special meeting of the board, okay? Okay, the next, um, so there won't be any budget discussion today, I'm just trying to get myself back to the agenda here, excuse me.
So, I'm sorry, Dave, just process question, so who, who is uh, supposed to follow up on. Going to county or sole discretion of the board, is that a staff thing, or is that one of the representatives of county council or yourself that would follow up on that?
Well, what, what we'll do, what I'm thinking is this, is that Andrea will develop the, the, the budget according to our instructions now. And then um, we'll have a meeting of the, of the board. And it's the board's responsibility to recommend a budget to county council, and it's county councils. Um, um, uh, responsibility to either fund us the way we've asked or not. So it's really in the hands of county council when all is said and done, because our budget. Comes out of the county taxpayers' pocket, as Adele said, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think the piece that is hanging is the Algonquin Highlands budget process. Because we will be starting our budget deliberation soon as well, and uh, I, I'd have to look at the scheduling, but we're gonna wanna know. Um, what our answer is to.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and Jen, on that, I, I think that we, we'll probably end up having a, a special meeting of the board ne- in the next week or two that quickly. Um, and in that period of time, Andrea can get the budget documents um, set up properly the way we want them, and. She and, and the, and the Algonquin Highland staff can have some discussion about. Um, the stuff we've talked about today, and we'll bring that forward to that meeting, and then we'll make a decision on what, what we're gonna fund as a board, is, is that okay?
Sure, I'm, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll trust that process, um, the, the Algonquin Highland staff, of course, won't be the ones. Um, and I don't mean to preach the converted here, but they won't have. Um, necessarily the authority to say, yes, we're okay with that recommendation or not, that will have to come to, to council, rather than um, negotiation with staff.
Yeah, and, and um, because it's coming out of a reserve. There's less of a requirement for the county council, um, in, in that case, in the sense that it's reserves money that we have, even though it's county council's money, per se. But once we've got a number that we want to apply towards the Dorset branch. Then we would just transfer that quantum, that full amount over into our budget, it'll throw the numbers all off again, but. Everybody will understand what's happening. And we'll do that in, within the next couple of weeks, that's kind of where I'm going, I'm not sure we're ready to do it today. But I think there's general consensus that we'd like to explore that today, or, or uh, in, in due course, when we, when we've got all the numbers ready. And that's, that'll be our decision, it's not a staff decision, it's our decision, our CEO will make a recommendation to us, saying, I think we should do this. With respect to the Dorset branch, and we'll say yea or nay to that. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good, okay. So no budget today, um, and that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing, um. Next item on the agenda is the me- meeting dates and times for the library board for twenty twenty-four, they're all listed there.
All of the meetings are listed on that sheet, so it continues with um, the schedule of Wednesday afternoons. On the same day um, as the county council, um, meet. No meeting in July and August, as is traditional, um, and we've kept the meeting starting at four o'clock. To uh, accommodate those of you who have to travel in between, um, from then to wherever you have to go. And so we'll continue the program, this program room has been booked for all of these meeting dates. Uh, for twenty twenty-four, and so we'll continue to meet in this hybrid model in person and on Zoom.
Okay, great. Um, what I usually do after a meeting like this is I take a fifteen minutes the next day and put all those dates in my calendar right away. And then we'll wait for the Zoom uh, connection to come, and that, at least that way it's there, um, Jen? I think you might be on mute.
Yeah.
You're on mute.
Yeah, no, I was shifting my screen so I could get to my mute button. Um, I, I looked to my fellow council members, did we agree to a slight date change? Because of a conference sometime in the coming year, um, uh, that would also be reflected at library board, or. Maybe that's my brain in Algonquin Highlands, I sometimes confuse the two, does that ring a bell to you?
Are you thinking of um, the August one, maybe, Jen?
Yeah, I think.
Don't meet within August for library, so it wouldn't affect.
Yeah, AMO's in, AMO's, AMO's in August, and we don't meet anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, that, I'm sure that's it, yeah, okay, great.
I think you're speaking about AMO, right, Lisa? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So.
And, yeah, and Roma is now, so, yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Okay, so that's good, um, could I have a motion, please, to um, be resolved with the Halliburton County Public Library, or receive for information of twenty twenty-four meeting dates? Moved by. Li- Lisa, seconded by. Jim, okay.
Just.
Cece? Yep.
Uh, there's one date that we haven't considered, and I was just wondering, what's the OEMC conference dates, because uh, some of us go to that too. Uh, that's the one for the Ontario, uh, oh, E, Ontario East Municipal Conference, which takes place in September. I just, I, I don't remember the dates, but I know it's early, and it's in that general timeline. Uh, not, not that I'm suggesting we, we make a lot of adjustments, but i- i- if, if that were the case, I know for sure that I would be going to that, and I would not be able to be available. Bear in mind, I'm only one, so maybe that's not an issue.
Cece, would you do, do, do us a favor, look that up, um, I, I don't, I don't know of that conference, I, in my days, I did, I did AMO and way, 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 way back, when Good Roads, that was always a fun one, but other than that, I didn't go to those other ones. So if you wouldn't mind looking that up, you don't have to do it now, look it up and send a note to.
I can look it up, Cece, could you repeat the name of the conference?
O-O-E-M-C, Ontario East Municipal Conference.
Oh, uh, September thir, uh, oh, wait, eleven to thirteen.
Exactly.
In the conflict on that day. So would you like to change that meeting day?
Well, I'm, if I'm the only one not gonna be there, then, then that's, that's up to the board to decide.
Yeah, I.
I'm attending that conference.
Do, do you go to that, Lisa?
No.
No.
Neither do I.
You might be the only one, Cece.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Why don't we, why don't we leave it, why don't we leave it now the way it is? And as we get a little closer, we can make that adjustment if necessary, but if, if a number of members of the board, elected officials wanna go to that conference. Because I don't wanna change it now, if it's just you for one person.
No problem.
Okay, great, okay, that's good. All right, um, municipal round table, anything the elected officials wanna tell us that's going on that we should know about? Okay, seeing none. Um, the next item is the closed session is canceled, and now we're gonna deal with adjournment, just before we, I, I ask for a mover for adjournment. Is there anything else any members of the board wanna talk about before we close the meeting? Thank you all for attending, and welcome to the new year of Halliburton County Public Library. Could I have a mover to adjourn, please? First hand up was Jen. Thank you, the meeting is adjourned, oh, Walt, did you have a question, sorry?